All right, we now call the city council regular meetings order for October the thirteenth at 6:00 PM. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Inocation given by Councilwoman Verdi McGuire.
Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this evening, Lord. We want to thank you for the mighty work that you did in Israel today, Lord, with the freeing of all of those hostages. Thank you for all of those individuals, Lord, that were instrumental in that coming to pass. Lord, I thank you for your direction tonight and for your wisdom as we go forth in settling the matters of the city. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America, in cetera, in homine, like the witness said, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McKeer?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
All right, first up, we have a proclamation for International Alpha Delta Kappa Month. We'll go ahead and read that into the record. It's whereas women in education constitute a great portion of the nation's working force and are constantly striving to serve their communities and nation in educational, cultural, charitable programs, leading to harmony, happiness, and peace among all people. And whereas major goals of Alpha Delta Kappa International Honorary Organization of Women Educators are to give recognition to outstanding educators, to build a fraternal fellowship among educators adding to their effectiveness and promoting excellence in education, to establish high standards for education, to promote educational and charitable projects and activities enriching the lives of individuals everywhere and assisting those individuals into happy, constructive, and fulfilling lives. Now therefore, I Garrett Anderson, Mayor of the City of Avon Park, Florida, by the authority invested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as International Alpha Delta Kappa Month. They are here to present this. All right, item number six, we have the employee longevity recognition. Ms. Cogard?
Yes, the city would like to recognize one of our firefighters. He's not able to be here tonight, but we want to go ahead and extend that recognition to Jose Duena. He's been with the city serving for five years now, so we thank him for his service.
You're here. All right, on the consent agenda, it's to be for items seven through twelve. Is there anyone wishing to remove one of these items?
I would like to remove C eight.
C eight? Were you about to say something, Miss Taylor?
Yeah, I um, go back to her, give me a moment. I would like to remove, she already said eight, seven.
Seven and eight, okay. This will be for items nine through twelve. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
So move.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda items nine through twelve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Let's call for questions or changes. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. All right, item number seven, this will be the minutes from September twenty-second. Have any questions or changes?
Yes, um, I've already talked to our clerk about the minutes. And actually, there's a lot of errors, and I'm not sure if the council want to go over each one of them tonight. I was hoping that perhaps maybe the council can um, um, give her another opportunity to review the minutes so that um, we can get some corrections. Um, there were some things that I thought that should be in the minutes, that wasn't in the minutes, but there were some things that were said, that others said. And um, I just thought that perhaps, I I found so many different instances, I thought perhaps maybe the um, the council would probably want to give her an opportunity. And I found out the reason why, there was no recording, so she did the best she could with what she had. And so.
Well, if you're inclined to put it off to another day, then you can make a motion to postpone to the next meeting or postpone indefinitely.
Well, um, I put a motion on the table to postpone the minutes for September the twenty-second, twenty-five um, to the next meeting and until she's had the opportunity to um, review them again.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone for item number seven. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments?
So if there's not a recording, then how are we going to go about making sure that the record's accurate?
I, I guess, I'm gonna let her answer, but I guess one of the things is she can talk to us. She can get our opinion or what we thought that took place, because I don't know if that's how it's done, but.
No, I, well, so legally, you're not required to have detail in the minutes. It really is only required in the Sunshine Act to have the things such as motions and things like that. But I mean, I understand how you you prefer and and you know, everybody prefers to have more detailed minutes, but if you don't have a recording, then she really just has to do the best she can with that. I I don't think she can take a, you know, independent, a point of what what each person thinks was said on a particular topic. I think that's just lost unless, I mean, I I saw a lot of videos being taken taken at that last meeting. So um, uh, maybe somebody has one that they don't mind letting her use.
And and Mr. Burr, the reason why I was making such a big deal on the minutes, um, because of where this city find themselves today. And I thought that it was very important that uh, there were certain things that were said that we probably would need um, to be able to use in the future.
And it's really up to the the to the uh, the council as to what they want to do with that. I mean, if they want to add things that you feel were said and they agree, then certainly you can make a motion to add that to the minutes, then that will become the minutes. If it's approved.
Okay.
So, do I need to change my?
Well, I think maybe best thing to do, rather than go through each individual item, is submit those, you know, to the council, uh, ask you what your changes are for the next meeting and then um, or she can do it in red line and you can go through each one red line and then that can be accepted after the fact if it's voted on and accepted. Because unless somebody has a fixed record of what was actually said, it's, you know, people have difference of opinion as what's what was said. I mean, if there's a factual record somewhere, then that would obviously take precedence, but if nobody provides one to you, then you're just stuck with that.
Okay.
So the last time we were in this chamber, the video recording didn't record. Are we positive it's doing it this time?
It did say audio recording in progress.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. All right, item number eight, it's be minutes from October the sixth.
It's the same thing. There were a couple of um, errors. I was gonna watch the video, but I didn't have the link um, for it, but now I know that it's on there, so I'll go back and look at that. So there are a few things that were um, not included. But one of the biggest discrepancies is on page twenty-five, says um, Councilmember McGuire and then a second by Taylor to direct the city manager to create a code of conduct. Um, but it should have been Mercur and Taylor. And then um, since you listed a lot of the the questions, two of the questions that I had asked that were included in the questions I would like to be on the record is I asked if it was found that if witnesses' info was not correct or not accurate, would he still consider the witness um, reliable? And he said yes, he wouldn't throw out the whole thing just because part of it was not inaccurate. And then another question I asked if all of the claims made by the witnesses had been vetted um, or if he had received uh, evidence for those those claims, and he said no.
So, if somebody wants to make a motion to amend the the minutes to include those items, you can do so, or you can wait until you have a video, if you have video of it.
And I'd like to say at this time, Mr. Burr, I, there was some other errors on this particular one as well. And I'd like to make a motion that we um, amend these minutes um, until our next meeting.
Postpone until next meeting.
Postpone to the next meeting.
Yeah, is there a second? There's a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Yep. Moving on to item number thirteen. After I scroll there.
This is an ordinance, number twenty-four dash twenty-five. An ordinance to amend the city code of section two dash thirty-three of the city code, increasing council pay and allowing participation by council members in city insurance program, providing for conflicts and providing for survivability, provide for inclusion in the code and an effective date.
Sure. Page eighty-seven.
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 Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve uh, item D thirteen uh, ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two, twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Or Mayor Anderson?
No. Item number fourteen. Be Memorial Drive sidewalk repair quote. Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
You want to go over this for us?
Yes, this is a proposal to repair the sidewalk there on Memorial, uh, stretching from seventeen down to uh, Joe Hilton Street. This is a EPI or excavation point, um, which you guys commonly use um, and piggyback on a contract with the city of Sebring. This is already uh, in the in the budget, y'all's sidewalks and curbs has a hundred thousand in it. Um, the cost for this would be twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty cents. And like I said, this is to repair all the damaged sidewalk along um, that east side of uh, Memorial there.
Okay, do we have any questions about this project?
I I have some question for Mr. King. Mr. King, you said it all the way down to Joe Hilton, um, and was the sidewalk inspected all the way to Carolina? The the reason why I'm asking, because I I I thought that it went farther than Joe Hilton. The the cracks, the breaks, I thought it went farther than that. So my question to you is, was the sidewalk actually inspected farther past Joe Hilton?
Yeah, I'm extremely new, as you know. Um, Jared Watson that's over the over the streets is who uh, went out and and inspected these uh, sidewalks. And uh, I did go out and look at this section of sidewalk with him that is busted up. I know that um, down by the power plant, um, there was some discussion about um, actually, power trucks damaging some of that, so I don't believe this extends all the way into that area. I think this stops short of that.
And the reason for it, because we're gonna let Duke Energy take care of it or what? I I guess my question I'm trying to ask is, if the if the entire entire sidewalk needs to be repaired, why are we stopping at Joe Hilton?
Yeah, I'm I'm extremely new and getting up to speed. I I don't have the answer if if that is, the intentions are to get Duke to or to seek Duke to go and repair those if Duke did that damage.
Hmm, okay. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know if we've ever reached out to Duke about the sidewalk being broken and if they're gonna be doing anything to correct their part of it?
We have, and their position is uh, it's not their responsibility.
Oh, it's not their responsibility to fix a sidewalk they cracked?
Well, they say it's not their responsibility because it's in our right of way. I mean, if we have proof that they cracked it, that's a different story.
Are they the only ones that drive over the top of it?
I I don't have an answer for that right now.
And so, so, so Dr. Kelly, you bring something else to the table. So if and when we do fix the cracks, the broken up sidewalk, um, even though it's in our right of way, whose responsibility is gonna be?
It's still the city's responsibility.
Every time they crack it?
Well, I mean, if we have proof that they're damaging our sidewalk, we can certainly bill them for it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so it looks like the amount of sidewalk we're talking about here is roughly three blocks. I don't have the ability to get a measurement here, but that's about uh, that's three blocks and you have to go in additional uh, two blocks. So, is there a possibility, I mean, it looks like we would have um, the funds in the account, but is there other projects planned for the rest of that money, do you know?
Not, not to my, not to my knowledge, and I know that there were funds left over sure, last year in 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 that budget for sidewalks. And and the intention is to repair as much as we can this year with the budget that y'all have given us.
Sure. So I mean, do you see an issue with uh, just going back out uh, to them and saying, hey, can you extend it all the way to uh, South Carolina Avenue? That's where you were talking about, right, Miss Taylor?
That's where it is.
Yeah.
At at this time, I I don't see, I don't see an issue uh, with that.
Okay, do you think that we need to make those repairs immediately? Or do you think we have time to just go back out and see if we can extend it down to South Carolina without causing any issue?
I, being so new, I don't know entirely how how bad all the sidewalks are through the city or if that section Memorial is is the absolute worst or if there's there's some in other parts of town that are, and you know, a big liability.
Right.
Of course, we'd like to tackle the ones that are the the biggest liability for the city first or the most traffic, you know.
Understood. Ms. Kelly, do you have anything to to add that you think would be an issue to go back out and see if we can go all the way down to South Carolina?
I don't think it's an issue at all. What I'd like to see really is to get started on the work that we have, get the quote for the addition and bring that back to a subsequent meeting.
Sure, okay.
The only thing I would add is the um, area where they pull their trucks over the sidewalk, get a lot of pictures of that. If it's something that's that's the only place where it goes right to their fence and so on, I think it's enough circumstantial evidence to bring a case if you if we need to. But you need lots lots of photos to show perspective.
Yeah.
Once it's, once it's corrected, obviously, it won't be any good anymore.
Sure. Well, having said all that, uh, do we have a motion to approve? Item number fourteen.
So are we gonna, I'm sorry, are we gonna approve this part? Or are we gonna approve to postpone until they come back and say, yes, we'll go down a little? Like, are we gonna do a contingent of um, their answer?
Dr. Kelly's recommendation was to go ahead and uh, approve this work and then ask them for a bid for the remainder of the work. And then we can see if what other projects we have and.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Sorry, Ms. Taylor, go ahead.
Go ahead. I make a motion to approve D fourteen Memorial Drive sidewalk repair um, for um, this particular quote and um, we'll put RFP out for continue repair.
Uh, also making another point that the um, it seems to me the land development code requires an apron for um, businesses to have an apron for their to their property. And if they don't have an apron, they're just running over the part, the the sidewalk because they never bothered to put an apron in. Um, might want to consider that, check with Central Florida Regional Planning Council as to whether that's true or not.
Okay, do we have a?
Shooting from the hip.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further questions or comments?
Um, I think maybe it would be best to, once we get it fixed, and I I don't, maybe I'm not correct by saying this, but to let them know, hey, we've we fixed this sidewalk now and and that we'll be keeping tabs just to make sure that if, you know, they decide we're gonna drive over it and not hold anybody accountable that we, we have replaced it.
Yeah, so so ideally, as we're as we're making these repairs, not just in this area, but in in a lot of areas throughout the city, is we're gonna start documenting these assets and plugging into a uh, a tool that we have so that in the future, we'll be able to go with some evidence with claims um, when we have to.
I'd also point out, if 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 the land development code requires that they have an apron there, then now's the time for them to put the apron in, not after we put in a new sidewalk in that spot.
Correct, and and we'll also increase the depth for sidewalks for heavy truck traffic.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire? Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Item number fifteen, we have the classic collidiums, north wall repair. Mr. King?
All right, um, this is, of course, is a building that the uh, the city owns out there at the airport property. Um, I did go out there and uh, visit this and the uh, the wall is severely uh, deteriorated. Um, we had uh, two quotes come in for proposals. Um, the low quote is uh, twenty-one thousand, two hundred for this repair. Um, and as you can see, as you read further on into the agenda, um, that there is not uh, any money set aside for this repair. Uh, this expense would be paid out of the uh, general fund. And any expenses, as with previous expenses tied to the classic collidium building, revenue captured through the lease payments will offset this expense.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't think Melanie's here though, but is she?
She's right there.
The CRA money could have been used for that? I'm just curious.
Or what?
Could the CRA money could have been?
Wall repair, classic collidium building?
No. Okay.
Who cares?
Just, just asking.
Why not? Just out of curiosity, why not? From my own knowledge.
It's maintenance. It's a routine maintenance. It's it's not a facade. It's on the wrong side.
Oh, it's not visible?
Statute excludes routine maintenance.
Okay.
It's at an airport. Can't you see it from the air? Come on.
So, so then why did, how did it get that bad? Have we never looked at it in doing inspections in our own buildings? So we ever never looked at it? Who did that? Not me. Oh.
I'm not sure how it got that bad, but we're here to fix it now.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Mi- Mr. Tommy, do you, I know you just got here because you keep saying you knew. I get that, but.
That's my excuse.
Yes, sir. Do you know when the last time that building has had an inspection? I'm just curious.
As far as inspection?
Uh.
I I don't know about a formal bui- building inspection. I'm not sure or familiar with that process here.
And I'm and I'm only asking, Mr. Tommy, because, you know, we 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 put some money into that building for the last three years, new roof and all that, so I was just concerned exactly how is the city um, keeping an eye on it? You know, this ain't no little bit of money we're talking about here. And so makes me wonder what kind of inspection has we been doing to this, talking about this particular building?
Denise, as far as the insurance review and adding all the buildings, was there any type of walkthrough with the?
So. So when I, when I talked to them a couple of years ago, uh, they were showing me how the um, their operation works. Their trucks are eighteen-wheelers go around the building and there's a wall on the um, I would say east side. There's that, if that's the wall, you know, it may be that they're bumping into that wall occasionally and that's why it's falling down. I just throw that out there as a possibility, because they're eighteen-wheelers running around. Uh, they they can't see very much. It's low like a wall, and uh, so I I just.
This is, yeah, this is on, this is on the north side, north side, and and it's corrosion that's common with still building structure.
So Jerry, if that were the case, then then I think the eighteen-wheelers insurance should have paid for it if they bumped the building.
Well, that's what the point I was making was that they would be liable for hitting our fences.
So maybe is that something that we should initiate, is some kind of an inspection, I don't know, once a year on our rentals?
We can certainly do that.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve D fifteen in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars to AO Wagner Construction.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Bernard Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Bernard, sorry. Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Item number sixteen, this will be the purchase of commercial containers. Mr. King again.
Yes, so this uh, is a proposal uh, using uh, Sourcewell to contract for the purchase of thirty-five commercial containers. Um, some, some of the commercial dumpsters I've seen uh, the sanitation supervisor uh, pick up and and haul around, the the bottoms are completely rusted out beyond repair. So this is a significant need um, to replace a lot of the dumpsters that you have here in town. Uh, as you can see, the the cost is uh, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty cents for thirty-five containers. Um, and down there on the budget, you can see that they actually done a budget amendment and split this cost between um, postage and handling and then also uh, commercial container GL item.
Okay, any questions on this?
I have some question for Mr. King. Mr. King, when we said commercial um, containers, we are talking about dumpsters?
Yes, ma'am, that's a fancy term for the dumpster.
Okay, sir, do you have any idea of the dumpsters that we have? Because you just said, how many we gonna get?
We're gonna get thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Do you know how long we've had the dumpsters that we have now? Do you, you have any idea how long we've had the city have?
The lifespan?
Uh-huh.
No, ma'am.
So you, so you do not know the lifespan of a dumpster?
No, ma'am.
Okay, my next question is, how do the city maintain maintenance on these dumpsters?
Currently, y'all do, y'all do not. My understanding is that y'all utilize them until they fail. At one time, I guess it was um, sent out to a fabrication shop um, for repair as needed. Um, but that became cost prohibitive as it was cheaper to actually replace the dumpsters than it was to have those uh, fabrication and painting them.
So do you think that the city should be maintaining their dumpsters? And when I say maintaining them, I mean, you said that a lot of rust and whatever, and I I guess they're corroding and you got holes in them or whatever. Do you believe it would be cost effective if the city were to maintain the dumpsters? Um, the reason why I'm asking this question, we had um, Mr. Lee in here from sanitation, and he had talked about um, the different types of um, food and particles that was put inside of the dumpsters, okay? And you know, the smell and all that. So my question to you is, do we ever clean our dumpsters? Do we ever try to prevent them from rusting? Do we ever do any type of minor welding on them? Or do we just wait to the end of their lifespan and we just get rid of them? Because I believe that uh, if we, if we um, maintain our equipment better, I think they'll last longer and it would be cost effective. So I'm gonna ask you, you said you don't think that we were. My next question to you is, do you think we should?
I didn't think, I didn't say that I.
You didn't think we were? Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
Do you think we are maintaining them?
No, ma'am, I think that they were a run until fail.
Running till they fail?
Yes, so I imagine that's, it's baked into the cost of doing business. Dumpsters have a certain lifespan.
Uh-huh.
What that lifespan is, I I don't, I don't know. That's not my, that's not, that is not my expertise, but I will make it my expertise.
Okay.
Uh, to find out how long a dumpster is supposed supposed to last. Um, I can tell you that y'all have some that are in really bad shape. I seen Mr. Lee hauling one down the road uh, yesterday, or not yesterday, but a couple of days ago that uh, there wasn't much on the bottom of it. Some some big ol's.
So if we ordering thirty-five, how many are we getting rid of? Um, and how do the city get rid of them?
Well, I'll let Mr. Lee answer that, but I would, I would imagine that the the ones that are in the worst shape, probably that one that he hauled out from wherever he hauled it from the other day, is definitely going away, because if that one's got any kind of liquid or anything put in it, it's gonna be in the parking lot of that, that client's uh, business.
Okay. All right.
He's here, he can speak on it if he wants.
It's, it's, it would be fairly difficult to, um, maintain them, for us to maintain them, once we leased them out to the customer. We pretty much, it, it's pretty much on them to maintain them. We used to take the bad ones and take them, uh, to a welding shop. And they would basically weld, uh, put a new bottom on them. Um, but that was just short of what it costs to get a new one. So that's why we decided, okay, we're not gonna have them welded anymore. We may as well get a new one.
So what program do we have in place to make sure that businesses are maintaining the dumpsters? Did, did we ever have one? Do we have one? Do you think we should have one? And the reason why I'm asking this, uh, Mr. Lee, is because our, uh, trash, uh, receptacle that we have residential, the city makes sure that we maintain that one. We have to maintain it, have to keep it clean, free of all debris and all that. So why are we not requiring that, um, uh, businesses take better care of our dumpsters if we're gonna be putting this kind of money into them?
Well, as far as the residential cans, if you will, it is in the ordinance that you are supposed to take care of it. But I can.
So we don't have nothing in our ordinance say that the businesses should take care of the dumpsters?
No, it's, it's fairly difficult with the, uh, the rain and stuff like that, and that rust is gonna come. Um, some, uh, some, you got some restaurants, some, you know, different places, they put different things in them that, eat them up. So even to say the lifespan of a dumpster, it's hard to tell.
I, I guess, Mr. Lee, what I'm asking is, bear with me here. I, I, I was thinking maybe the restaurants, and I'm not saying that food corrode, uh, dumpsters. I don't know if it is or not. You, that's your field. You would know that. So if we are allowing them to put whatever they put in the dumpsters and it helping, um, is taken away from the lifespan of the dumpster, then why are we not requiring that at a certain time? They clean that dumpster. They maintain that dumpster and make sure that, you know, pressure wash it or whatever. Or if we don't want them to do it, then I know I'm asking for a lot here. Then why the city have, why the city ain't do it? I, I go around town. I look at these dumpsters. They are fifty. And so if, if we are speeding up the lifespans of the dumpster because of what we allowing, uh, businesses put in, what are we doing to prevent that? Anything?
Sorry. We're, we're not doing anything. The difficulty would be to monitor that. Um, again, like the, like the residential cans you have in front of your house, it's in the city ordinance that they are to be cleaned, but probably eighty percent are not clean. So, you know, it just is be the same situation to try to monitor that. Uh, that would be fairly, not fairly, very difficult to do.
Well, we could, we could write code that says that restaurants shouldn't put vinegar, which is acidic into dumpsters or, you know, things that are caustic in dumpsters, which on the other side of the pH scale.
Yes, sir.
Things that eat up, eat up the dumpsters and it's hard to monitor, but at least we, we've established something in case you see a big container of vinegar sitting in there, pour it over the bottom.
I agree.
So I mean, I, I think that's something we could add at some point if, if the city manager wants to.
The internet tells me the lifespan of a dumpster is ten to twelve years.
Ten, twelve years.
Judging the ones I've seen, that they're probably well beyond that, so.
Okay.
That would, that would probably be easier to do if they weren't out in the elements. You know, the rain and, and, uh, different things like that, the sun and all that kind of stuff.
Because they are, how long you saying they last? Because they are? Five, six years?
Oh, no. No.
Dr. Kelly, do you know how much we charge for the two yard dumpster for the actual rental fee? Per month? Was it fifteen? Are you talking, does that sound familiar? No, for the commercial, for the two yard, because there's a rental fee and then we're paying for the per charge pickup.
That sounds about right, yes.
About fifteen?
Yes.
So if, if, if it's fifteen, um, dollars, Ms. Taylor, then that dumpster would be paid for in three years rental fees then, that two yards. So if they're lasting a lot longer than that, then we're still getting more bang for our buck.
Yeah. So you get your ROI in three years and then everything on top of that would be, uh, you know,
Extra.
Money that would go, you know, towards paying your, your pickups and, and everything else.
Okay. And so my last question is, how long you think it's gonna take for the city have to order more dumpsters? You can't even tell. You can't even say.
Nope. I just got here, but.
Ms. Taylor?
My, my, my intention is to get inventory of all the dumpsters that we have, put on a map and track all those assets by year. And when we put these new dumpsters in there, have them, have dates attached to every single dumpster to know when we install that dumpster.
I, I know I said it was my last question, but do you believe that we're gonna have to order some more like within the next year?
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's a, it, we, because, because we have so many commercial accounts. So it's on a, you know, we got ordered ten two yarders, ten four yarders, five, six yarders and ten eight yarders. But if you look, we got, I don't know how many eight yarders out, you know, that are being used by, uh, customers and how many two yarders and how many, so they're always, it's always a rotation. And then you got people that are, that are wanting, hey, I need a new dumpster or, or a new business that maybe need a dumpster. So it's, it's, it will probably, no, we will definitely have to order more.
Look, I suggest you could, you could put some code in to try and protect, but then just take your rates set so that you, you pay for the additional cost of having to replace them. And, uh, rather than having employees have to do a lot of extra work that, um, you know, really is caused by them, by the customers.
Okay.
But, but none of these dumpsters is gonna be set out in a field somewhere waiting to be put online?
You mean brand new or you mean?
These thirty-five that we're ordering, they're gonna be set in the field. All of these gonna be put in circulation?
Within a few months, yes. We, we order, uh, we just put in an order, I think, two weeks ago. And it may take six months for that order to get here.
That's all I have. So Mike.
I think she was asking, um, once they're delivered, are they gonna be delivered to lay out in a field? Are they gonna be delivered to, uh, uh, covering?
Yeah, they're, they're, well, we don't have a, a, a covered area at Public Works, so they're sitting out in the field. But, um, we do put the lids on them so the rain doesn't set in them. The rain hits on the top and bounces off. Um, but you know, the, 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 the sun and, and things like that, but we do try to do our best. I ordered so many because they go so fast at times. You know, um, starting tomorrow, maybe the season of the ten yarders. Every, all of them will go fast, but sometimes the ten yarders go faster or the two yarders go faster. But in order, in order to be able to supply the customer, I have to have them in stock.
And, yeah, and they're not, they're not Corvettes. I mean, when we order these things, they're, they're, they're sitting in a yard somewhere when they build them out, waiting to be delivered. They're sitting somewhere just like they'll be sitting, you know, back behind our warehouse before we roll them out into the field. And I think when I walked out there the other day, we probably got more onsite.
Five, six yarders. That's why I only order five.
And how do you get rid of the ones that you no longer want or we, it no longer in use? What, how do we disperse them?
We, um, put them on a truck. We take them and, uh, to the scrapyard and sell them and put the money back into, uh, sanitation fund.
So I have a question. So on the invoice, you have lid locks, automatic serious side mount installed. What are, just, I just, I think I might know what they are, but could you explain what lid locks are?
Those are, you could, you could, some people call them lock bars. So the bar that goes across, when you put the lids down, there's a bar that goes across. You, you hit that bar here. And, and you could put a lock on it to keep people from using your dumpsters.
Gotcha. So when you order these, I don't know, they probably come with lids, but what if you, what about the dumpsters that you have that have issues with the lids? Do you buy lids separately? Do they sell lids just separately? I'm not talking about lid, the flaps. So, yeah, I guess it's a lid.
Every, everything that we need for each one of these dumpsters that we just recently ordered, comes with it.
Right. But what about the ones that aren't in bad shape? They don't necessarily need to be replaced, but the lid does.
We do have extra lids, um, at Public Works.
How often you order those? Not too often? They last pretty good, right?
We have not had to order any in a while. It's cause sometimes when a dumpster goes bad, the lids are still good, so we keep those.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve D sixteen.
Second.
I'll second.
We have person on second. Is there a question online or someone who's talking? Seeing none. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
The member McGuire?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Yes. Item number seventeen, this will be the lease of garbage truck. Mr. King?
And this is a, uh, proposal from RDK Assets, um, on a piggyback with, uh, Pope County that currently, uh, uses them.
Mr. King, is your microphone on?
It says it's on. Is that better?
There, much better.
All right. Uh, this proposal, um, is a lease with RDK Assets, um, on a piggyback with Pope County, for a front loader, garbage truck. This is a, uh, an issue in y'all's current fleet. That seems to be the thing that has always broke down is our, uh, front loaders. You can see here it's for eighty-five hundred a month. The county's lease is good through, uh, twenty thirty-two. And that lease, the way it's written, uh, for the county, um, and myself and Lee spoke with them, um, when we had this lease drafted, it'll be drafted on those exact terms. Um, it can be terminated, um, as needed. This should allow, uh, that's pretty much it. This front loader though is gonna bail y'all out because the other, the other two trucks are in dire need of, uh, overhaul.
Yeah. So this lease is gonna be eighty-five hundred dollars a month until we no longer want the vehicle anymore?
That is correct.
And this lease is for this exact vehicle. It's not going to replace the vehicle every so many years or anything.
Not at this time.
Yeah.
So is this a lease that at the end of the period indicated that we would be able to purchase truck?
I don't recall a purchase agreement in that lease.
I don't, I don't recall a.
Yeah.
I don't recall a purchase being in there either.
So basically it's not really a lease, then it would be considered a rental?
Right? I mean, I'm. Probably a lease, just not a lease to own. Um, but did we go out for any kind of estimates on what it would cost to actually purchase it?
All right, purchase it.
Yeah.
There is, there is a purchase price in here.
In the.
I saw, yeah, I saw one for the picture. It said, I thought it said five hundred and something thousand. Is that what you saw?
And I haven't went extremely far down this rabbit hole yet, but I can just tell you about what, what's onsite out there at Public Works and, and the little bit that I've been here, that, um, leasing and, and keeping this stuff under warranty where they can service the hydraulics and service these machines i- is gonna be the ideal way to go. I think that your private sector probably follows the same route.
And Mr. King, how, how many of these, uh, truck, uh, front loaders do we have, uh, on the streets weekly?
Currently y'all have two.
And so.
But one of them, one of them is, we try and keep on the street, but we're, we're having a tough time between the two that y'all actively have, keeping one of those going.
And so this won't be like a backup? You will actually put this out on the streets?
This would, this would go, this would go into operation and then.
Okay. And so the one that we currently having a lot of problems with it, um, is that a lease? Is that one a lease?
Those, those are, those are owned. Those are owned.
So you're gonna keep both of them on the streets or you're gonna take the one we having the problems on? Off the streets?
You got two, y'all got two that have problems. Maybe, maybe we can build one good truck. We, 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 we need, we need some breathing room to, to fix. Yeah, you are currently consu- you are consuming about fifty-five gallons of hydraulic oil a week.
Wow.
A week.
That means you're producing fifty-five gallons of hydraulic oil on the streets?
Nah, most of it's going in your garbage truck. But I, I'm just, I mean, this is, this is a fact. This is with all your, this is across, this is across your whole fleet though. Okay, that's, that's the first thing I noticed is fifty-five, it's fifty-five gallons of hydraulic fluid.
Is that, is that is considered a lot?
That's, that's a lot. So I mean, we, this is, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta get this fixed.
We gotta what?
We have to get this fixed. And I mean, this lease is, 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 is moving in the right direction.
And you believe because of these two trucks?
What's that?
You believe that we're using so much, um, hydraulic, um, fluid? You say fluid?
Yes, ma'am.
Because of these two trucks?
Mainly because of these two trucks.
Mainly because of these two trucks.
But you're, you're, your, your garbage, your, your garbage fleet hydraulics, um, are, are not in good shape.
Okay. So with this lease, it's through the county, right?
No, ma'am.
It's not?
It's through RDK.
Okay. So, um, does the mowage that the city uses to operate this truck, does it play a part in the cost of these vehicles? The mowage that the city uses? Does it play a part?
It's ours. So there's an operational hours um, in these lease agreements that, that they, that they limit you to.
Okay.
Yes.
It's hard to see all the prices on here, but most of the prices on the replacement value of the vehicles are only between like two hundred and three hundred thousand. Seems kind of, I mean, you, because the garbage trucks we have now are pretty old, right? They've lasted a long time.
Yes.
I guess that's my only concern is spending a hundred thousand dollars a year on leasing one if one can be purchased for like three. I mean, I get the maintenance aspect of it. I, you know, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, I, I, I'm gonna head way down the rabbit hole, but I mean, garbage trucks, it's, it's a extremely harsh environment, just like you were talking about. A lot of, a lot of the food waste and everything that goes in these things, extremely corrosive environment. It's harsh on, on, uh, all of it. And that's, I mean, it's, it's rough on them.
So Mr. King, what you're saying, I'm, I'm, I'm making sure I understand you. What you're saying is it is best for us to lease because of the repair that we may have to pay because of the tear and wear that we're gonna be putting on the vehicle on a daily basis? It's better to lease than it is to buy? I'm asking.
I'm saying at this juncture right now, where, where the city's at with y'all's current fleet, it is in your best interest to lease this front loader until we can get a good handle on our assets, maintenance. And then going forward, we'll, we'll be able to determine whether outright purchases is, is, is the right way to go.
Okay. Mr. King, could you, uh, if you have the packet there in front of you, could you pull up page three oh three?
I got it electronically here. I don't have it right.
I'm right there with you. Page three oh three outlines the approach and methodology from RDK. So it says, RDK, item number one, will provide new trucks every two years. Trucks will always be under warranty. When the county has provided new trucks every two years, uh, item number two, RDK will stand good for all manufacturer warranties. RDK will pick up leased trucks for warranty or other repairs to be completed. RDK will supply in-house parts on consignment basis for ease of maintenance. Supply a rental within twenty-four hours for one dollar for a down truck if need be. You know if that applies to the lease option that we are picking?
Yes, that was the clarification that I, uh, asked about because, um, the generic lease that they had originally sent over, the one pager, did not include that verbiage, so.
So we're actually getting a new truck every two years?
If we stay, if we stay with the program for that long, correct.
So we'll always have a truck in tip-top shape if we take the lease option, is your opinion?
Yes, as well as the roadside assistance, if you will.
Right. If it does break down, they're gonna bring us another one within twenty-four hours.
Correct.
And that's probably the most valuable part right there.
Correct. Yeah.
And this is for, they do, the lease is good for seven years? Although we haven't got the truck yet and the lease start this year. It started sometime this year, twenty-five.
We, we, we would have to have a, we would have to have a lease agreement drafted for, for the city on Pope County's same terms. Pope County, the agreement that we are piggybacking on ends on December thirty-first of twenty thirty-two. But we did call over to clarify that we would get the exact same terms that Pope County got.
Okay. I guess the only reason why I'm asking is, as I was lea- reading the lease, it said it's supposed to start at this year, twenty-five. We haven't even got the trucks yet. Okay, I guess the only reason why I'm asking is, as I was lea, reading the lease, it said it's supposed to start at this year twenty-five. We haven't even got the trucks yet. And so why is it not starting in twenty-six? I'm just asking.
Guess I'm not reading what.
That's not our particular lease, I think is what he's saying. So they're gonna write us a lease based on this lease.
Well, if I may, um, we need trucks now for the last, last week and maybe the week before that, uh, so about two weeks now. We've been picking up the residential with one truck and a half of a truck. I have two, uh, Ford Rangers out picking up garbage out of cans and taking them to dumpsters so that we can get the city picked up because two, three, two of our trucks are in the shop because they're old. I have a claw truck in the shop because it's old. So we have one claw truck. So if your, your bulk and your yard waste is not getting picked up in a timely matter, that is why. So we need trucks. So I don't know if the, for the twenty-six lease would start now, but it, it wouldn't help us to wait until, uh, January twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-six.
When do y'all expect, you know, once the lease get approved and council approved, when do y'all expect that arrival of this truck?
Well, once it's approved, um, I've already talked to RDK, the representative, and they have trucks on site, already ready to go.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve D seventeen, the lease of the garbage truck.
Second.
We have a motion. Do we have, we have a second and last call for questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McQuire?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Yes. Item number eighteen, it's be an agreement for municipal strategic planning consulting services. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, thank you. You may recall earlier this year, we issued an RFP twenty-five oh six, looking for consulting services for municipal strategic planning um, program. So we went out to RFP, we had several responses. That was all brought to you. You chose Dr. Levy's consulting firm. He is online if you have any questions for him. So, um, Attorney Burr was nice enough to do a contract for us, and that's what's in front of you today. It's based off the RFP. There's a research and assessment portion, stakeholder engagement, strategic planning and goal setting, plan development and finalization. You can see here that the deliverables will be a presentation to council, ten copies for you. And the price is forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And it's a lump sum per task, per milestone that he gets paid.
Okay, questions?
Sorry, it takes about six months.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve D eighteen, the agreement for municipal strategic planning consulting services.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember McQuire?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Can I step back to seventeen just for a second? I just wanted to make mention that some cities, I just looked it up under municipal code. It's called solid waste are requiring that people empty, um, all liquids from all containers that are going into solid waste. That would remove some of your acidic and caustic, um, components disaround that out there. Sorry.
Wait, what do you mean have them remove all the liquid?
They pour liquids out of any containers that you're throwing away because it's liquids in the containers that are caustic or, or acidic.
Right.
And that's what's causing the problem in most, in most instances, I would think.
So the, the, the garbage cans, the, the dumpsters already have drain holes inside of them.
Yeah, but still that liquid's still on the, on the, on the bottom lane there, even part of it drains out.
Yes.
They probably add a provision like that to the code.
That they would empty their own garbage?
Everybody should.
Like if they had a milk jug, they would dump the milk jug before putting it in the dumpster.
Wasn't necessarily anything that came from a jug. It was just rainwater that accumulated in there.
That's different. Obviously, we had no control over that.
Okay.
And I know certain businesses, you can't pull the plug out because nothing can go out on the ground. I know schools are that way and other different properties.
Yeah.
So.
And some cities require that any new construction has an actual place that they put them. It's, it's, um, a garage for their, their little, little garage for their dumpsters with the fence on it and a drain. You know, so anyway, let's run it out there. Sorry to bring that back up.
Okay. All right, item number nineteen, we have the Ridge to River Conservation Plan Study Presentation. We have Ms. Ritter.
Yes, all right.
Whenever you are ready, go right ahead.
Hi, everybody. I'm, I'm Dawn Ritter. I'm the Natural Resource Manager for Highlands County. I'm actually here because I just wanna announce and invite everybody to three community workshops that we're doing, and this presentation will actually be at those workshops. So the Ridge to River Conservation Plan is a program, it's a plan that we started. It's gonna be roughly two years. We're already halfway there. This plan is a community-based study to establish a conservation program for Highlands County to support our natural resources. So like I said, we will have three public, public workshops. The first one is October twenty-eighth. It will be in the Highlands County Government Center. The second one is October twenty-ninth. It's at the Avon Park Community Center. And the final one will be October thirtieth at H.L. Bishop Park in Lake Placid. All of these workshops are from six to seven-thirty. We also plan to livestream it. So if you aren't able to attend, please view online. We really want public input in the matter and to hear what the public has to say about the conservation efforts for Highlands County. So we've also already completed roughly two workshops. One was for the Board of County Commissioners and the other one was uh, based for, off of our subject matter experts. So things that were discussed were surface water features, agricultural, threatened endangered species, uh, drinking water and access to recreation. So please come out.
Very good. Any questions for, uh, Ms. Ritter?
No, thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much. All right, item number twenty. Mr. Burr?
Okay, so, um, I was, um, I was asked to put together this, um, slideshow regarding the, um, Avon Park Housing Authority and what, what the, um, interaction is between the city council and the Avon Park Housing Authority. So I was just gonna go through, through these slides really quickly. So their, their annual meetings in October, regular meetings um, um, are as determined by the board. These are, um, uh, sections of their bylaws they pulled out. Special meetings are called by chair or the Avon Park Housing Authority Board, or upon the request, two members of the board business is limited to call. All members of the board commissioners under, uh, they're called commissioners under the statute, uh, expected to attend all meetings and excessive absences caused for removal by the mayor or city council, excessive um, uh, absences are defined as, uh, any three consecutive meetings or more than forty percent of a year's meetings. That, that might be a conflict with the statute, but, um, uh, it's not really important at this point. Quorum is a majority of the board, just like most, most, um, groups. Um, there should never be less than three members, and it must be composed of the then-current board members and/or employees of the current board, uh, of the, of the park, uh, housing authority. Uh, section four twenty-one point oh five one requires not less than five nor more than seven. So this bylaw should be changed to conform to the statute, but pointed out if they're under four sets, uh, section four twenty-one point oh five three, it does allow them to keep whatever nor, number they had if it's not in, in conformance of the statute. Um, if it's, um, if that number was there on March twenty-eighth nineteen ninety-one. Okay, some relevant sections of the, um, bylaws. Again, uh, each member of the board of directors shall serve for a term of two years on the date of qualification, selection, and selection. There shall be no limits, uh, term limits applicable to the number of consecutive terms each qualified member of the board directors may serve. Sports, section four twenty-one oh five one states that the term shall be four years and that the bylaw should be changed to reflect this term. But there are no term limits in the statutes either. Some additional statutory provisions, um, notes and legal rulings. Each housing authority is created pursuant to this chapter shall have at least one commissioner who shall be a resident who is current in rent in a housing project or a person of low or very low income who resides within the housing authority's jurisdiction and is receiving rent subsidy through the program administered by the authority or the public, uh, housing authority that has jurisdiction for that locality.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Burr, I mean, to interrupt you.
No problem.
Are you saying that at least one housing resident should sit on the board?
At least one board member, uh, should be, um, a resident who's current in rent uh, or, um, a person that of low or very low income. That's, you know, that's an amount that they state who resides within the housing authority's jurisdiction is receiving red and is receiving rent subsidies through the, uh, housing authority. Some more, uh, the powers of each authority shall be vested in the commissioners thereof in the office from time to time. A majority of the commissioners shall constitute a quorum of, of the authority as per purposes of conducting this business. This is from the statute. So other than activation, the Avon Park Housing Authority and selection of or removal of the housing authority commissioners, chapter four twenty-one provides strong comprehensive statements showing the autonomy of the Avon Park Housing Authority to operate without direction by the city. So the, um, so ended up out of, out of order here. So statutory background of the housing authority uh, uh, authorizes, um, there's, there exist in the state in sanitary, the insanitary and unsafe dwelling accommodations and the persons of low income are forced to reside in such unsanitary and unsafe accommodations that within the state there is a shortage of safe and, uh, or, or sanitary dwelling accommodations available at rents which persons of low income can afford. And that such persons are forced to occupy overcrowded and congested dwelling accommodations. But these conditions necessitate excessive disproportionate expenditures of, of public funds for crime prevention and punishment, public health, welfare, safety, fire and accident protection and other public services. That's straight out of the statute. So statutory background for the housing authority, uh, authorizes such as the Avon Park Housing Authority. So blighted, this is, um, from four twenty-one, blighted areas of the state cannot be revitalized nor can the shortage of safe and sanitary dwellings for persons of low income be relieved solely through the operation of private enterprise. The clearance, replanning and reconstruction of the areas in which in sanitary, unsafe housing conditions exist and the providing of safe and sanitary dwelling accommodations for persons of low income, including the acquisition by housing authority of property to be used for in con, or in conjunction with housing projects or pertinent to thereto are exclusively public uses and purposes for which public money may be spent in private property acquired in our governmental functions of public concern. So this is the statute creating the, the Avon Park and all housing authorities and, and authorizing activation. So under the statute, just as a nuanced, strangest thing I've ever seen, the statute creates housing authorities everywhere, every county, every city. But they don't exist in, in reality until that government authorizes it to exist. But there's nothing I see that can remove that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jerry, you say they don't exist until what?
Until that the government for that area, the city or the county, um, actually authorizes it to commence operation and selects the, the initial board members. And actually, they select the, the, uh, initial chair as well. So under section, subsection one, it says in any city as defined, there is, here, here in the, defined, there is hereby create a public body corporate and politic to be known as the housing authority of the city, provided however that such authority shall not transact any business or exercise its powers hereunder until and unless the governing body, the, the city by proper resolution shall declare that there's a need for the authority to function in such city. The determination as to whether there is a need for the authority to function may be made by the government body on its own motion. So just as I said, it exists. They say it's a body corporate exists, but then they can't take any action until the city, uh, authorizes it, which you did. But going on to that, says, um, statute authorizing activation of the Avon Park Housing Authorities. The governing body may adopt a resolution declaring that there is a need for a housing authority in the city if it shall find that in sanitary and unsafe inhabited dwelling accommodations exist in such city, or there is a shortage of, of safe or sanitary dwelling accommodations in such city available to persons of low income at rentals that they can afford. Then I provide you a copy basically of the resolution which this, um, city passed, um, authorizing that housing authority to commence um, operation and has those elements in it. So what is the city council's involvement in the Avon Park Housing Authority? After formation, initial selection of the commissioners of the Avon Park Housing Authority by the mayor with the approval of the council, each commissioner shall be appointed as aforementioned by the mayor with approval of the council for a term of, of office of four years, except that a vacancy shall be filled for the un, unexpired term by an appointment by the mayor with approval of the governing body within sixty days after such vacancy occurs. No commissioner of authority may be an officer or employee of the city for which the authority is created. Commissioner shall hold office until successor has been appointed and qualified. I have a problem here with my throat. Each housing authority created pursuant to this chapter shall have at least one commissioner who is a resident. Uh, I already went through that. It does get a little, a little bit more into the details about it, but it's right there. AGO two thousand ten dash oh seven says a vacancy in office is created when a tenant commissioner is no longer current in rent. Thank you. I didn't find any water in the back there, so I didn't have any things.
If you need a refill, I got some.
Uh, thanks, I got, got enough.
Okay.
A vacancy in the office is created when a tenant commissioner is no longer current in rent and replacement for that officer must be appointed with an expired, expired term. So as I mentioned earlier, that, um, the, the, um, commission, there has to be one commissioner there that is either, um, receiving the subsidies within jurisdiction or is a, a renter there and is current in its rent. If they no longer become current in their rent, then, um, they have to be replaced immediately. It's not like, oh, you can have a couple of weeks to pay off the rent. It's, the statute says it's gotta be done immediately. Uh, Attorney General's Opinion ninety-seven dash thirty-five, convicted felon who has not had civil rights restored or is not eligible to be appointed to serve on the board of the directors of the municipal housing authority. Um, I noticed that when, when, um, I noted that when applications are sent, they should include a permission form to seek and obtain any criminal record. Um, I think that that was, um, you've also included that as a statement, um, in your, uh, applications as to whether somebody's been convicted of felony. AGO seventy-four twenty-three, commissioner of a housing authority created by four twenty-one need not be a resident of the city or a housing authority's area of operation, but as a matter of policy, the mayor shall, should appoint persons to such position who are residents of the city or housing authority's area of operation.
Mr. Burr, I have a question on this one. The AGO ninety-seven dash thirty-five where it talks about convicted felon. So is that the housing authority's, um, responsibility to do a background check, or, or is that our responsibility to do that?
Uh, you all, uh, um, the mayor appoints and you all approve the appointment. So it's our responsibility to make sure that that person is qualified.
Okay, so the city would have to pay for a background check for the housing authority?
I would think so, yes.
And so how would we recoup that money back from them?
I don't know.
Because, um, sometimes those background checks can get a little pricey.
Um, I don't know. You, you all do them all the time, uh, that, do you know how much they are?
I mean, I also think it just depends on what level you're, uh, investigating them at.
Yeah, they, they average about fifty to a hundred dollars, but then if the person lived in multiple states and jurisdictions, they tack on for each state that they're searching through.
And, and, and we're being paying for every background check at the housing authority? I'm asking.
At the housing authority, I, I don't, I'm not aware of doing any. Um, I, I handle the employee side, so.
I guess my next question is, have we been running a background check on the, um, the applicant that wants to sit on the board of the housing? the applicants that wants to sit on the board of the housing authority? Do anybody know?
No, we haven't. We were previously, we would check their references that they would provide. And then very recently Attorney Burr gave us a comprehensive vetting sheet to go through with them.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was from their their attorney, Rick Gilmore. Okay.
I don't know. I just don't feel like I agree with that. I mean, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying I don't I don't agree with the city having to pay for the housing authorities background checks.
Well, it probably be good practice, but you know, I don't think there's anything in the law that I'm aware of that says you have to do that, but I mean, I don't, do they swear to the contents of their application now? If they don't swear, under penalty of perjury, I mean, they basically could say anything, right?
We could add that to it. I don't recall that it's on the application.
So so, Mr. Burr, let me make sure I understand you right. They're saying that they can't have a criminal record to sit on the board, right?
That's what the Attorney General, the Attorney General said.
If we're not running a background check, how do we know that they don't have a criminal background record?
I don't know. But it was a concern of their attorney that we were not checking that.
And you're saying that we don't have to have one? What are you saying?
No, I didn't say that.
Shelley that we don't have to have one, a background check?
I'm I'm not aware of being, and this is an Attorney General's opinion, simply saying that that is not supposed to be not supposed to be appointed, some somebody that is eligible. But if you put on the form, have you been convicted of a felony? Is that the is that the end of it if they say no?
And so and and if they say no, and we've later that they are, they breaking it, the rules, and so are who?
Well.
People that appointed them? I'm I'm asking.
Well, no, you can ask all you want, but I have no answer for you other than say that, other than say that, you know, you're you're how how far do you have to go if somebody lies? To, I'll tell you, is even is a criminal, you know, checking their criminal background? Or do we need to check any other countries that they might have been in that 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 I mean, there's you can, there's you can go to ridiculous lengths if you want to find out about felonies, but but you start with by asking them, which we haven't ever had on our application, which we have recently, as she mentioned, I said, we need to add that to that application. But if you want, you know, to have a more assurance of that, then a background check would be good. But obviously, Councilmember McCure is not happy with the fact that we'd have to pay for that ourselves.
I didn't know we, I didn't know we were if we ever. I'm not happy with that either.
But we have no enforcement authority whatsoever on Avon Park Housing Authority, so you know, I guess we can say we'll do what we'll we'll just put it on the application, but if you want us to be best with it, then we'll 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 charge them, but you'll have to pay for it. And you can do that, but.
So why wouldn't the housing authority get their applications, get them turned in, do the background checks on the ones that they pick out and then?
Because it's not their job, it's not their job to pick anybody.
To, no, 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 to approach us with the applications, to approach us with the applications.
But they wouldn't even have an application unless, you know, the mayor was selected them. And I guess they could apply to the mayor and the mayor selects them, then then they could review their their application if you wanted to send it over there. And they agree to do that. If not, you just have to take their word if you don't want to pay for it.
Okay, Mr. Jerry, brings me to this question. Can the board of the housing authority send a list to the mayor for their recommendation of who they want on the board? Because I see that that happens right here. There's different boards that we appoint and they send in their recommendation and we get to the vote, say yes or no. So can that housing authority do that?
They can send in a list of people that they that they'd like to see on the board, yeah. But he can ignore it as well and pick somebody else.
Okay. I I may be jumping the gun here, Mr. Burr. So here's my next question. Can the housing authority ever break away from the city of Avon Park? And when I, when I, when I say that, I mean, you know how we once discussed the CRA breaking away from the mothership? We want to discuss that it totally different.
Totally different.
So.
As I think, you know, if you were to summarize everything I'm saying here is the only thing that you have any responsibility with or any authority about over is selection of their their commissioners, their board members, or removal of their board members.
So I'm ask the question again. The housing authority cannot exist without the city of Avon Park. Is that what you're saying? The housing authority cannot exist without the city of Avon Park and their appointments. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want.
Who else is going to select their board members?
Well, I sit on the ALPI board and you don't govern the ALPI board. I know that's a whole nother.
This is, this is based on statutes. I've read you the statutes that say that this is how it works. We select the commissioners. We, when I say we, I said the board selects the commissioner or through the mayor, and then you all approve it, and then the mayor can remove somebody, and you all approve that as long as there's cause to remove for removal.
Okay, I got clarification on that.
AGO seventy four dash twenty three, a commissioner of the housing authority created by need not be a resident of the housing authorities area operation, but I think I meant that I read that when I went back. Eighty two dash one hundred, if the council takes no action on appointment of by the mayor, the the present housing authority commissioner serves until replaced, there are no temporary commissioners. In other words, you can't select somebody temporarily to serve as a commissioner until you select somebody. Eighty two one hundred, the council cannot demand from the mayor selection of a particular person as a commissioner, nor can the council require that the mayor appoint several persons from for one position on the commission so that they can choose from that list. Nevertheless, in my opinion, the city's present system where the mayor allows input from the council seeking names of qualified and interested persons from the council does not violate the AGO, but the mayor is still free to choose from qualified persons not suggested by the council members. The council is free to reject the selection by the mayor, but not but not to demand selection of another council preferred candidate. Persons with conflicts of interest may not serve on the Avon Park Housing Authority. And that's a federal rule. If such conflict exists, the mayor may seek to obtain waiver from HUD or not select that person. For inefficiency or neglected duty or misconduct in office, a commissioner of an authority may be removed by the mayor with the concurrence of the governing body, but a commissioner shall not be removed, shall be removed only after he or she shall be given a copy of the charges at least ten days prior to the hearing thereon and had an opportunity to be heard in person or by council. In the event of removal of any commissioner, a record of the proceedings, together with the charges finding and findings thereon shall be filed in the office of the clerk. So basically, you have to have due process for removal. Following applies only to the liaison to Avon Park Housing Authority, as I have not reviewed underlying statutes, ordinances, or resolutions to other city committees. Other than the commissioner selection and removal, Chapter four twenty one of the Florida statutes contains no discussion about the city providing any form of control, supervision, or even advice to the housing authority. And I mentioned that, see slide nineteen. Nevertheless, appointment of a liaison to the council to the Avon Park Housing Authority, and even an alternative is lawful, but that appointment imbued, that appointment imbues that person with absolutely no authority to make demands, instructions, opinions, or give guidance to the Avon Park Housing Authority, which is strongly autonomous from the city, as I mentioned in an earlier slide. Section two dash thirty five of the city code gives the mayor the authority to select committee members and by extension, the council liaison to that committee, but grants no additional authority to take any actions, demands, instructions, opinions, or give guidance to any committee. In my opinion, that that council member is there solely to observe or report back to the council as to the Avon Park Housing Authority's activities, good or bad. I have a slide on the supremacies of laws.
Mr. Burr, not cut you off, but I'm trying to ask my, ask my questions where you at, okay?
Sure.
You have Shelley as the primary, have me secondary to the housing authority. And I'm quite sure Shelley, as well as I, have constituents that lives in the housing authority. So we could never bring to the board our complaints and concerns from our constituents?
Yeah, no, that, I didn't say that.
No, I was just, because you say.
I just said, I simply said.
You went over a lot of things that I think the liaison couldn't have, so.
Yeah, no, but that involved as to the Avon Park Housing Authority because it's strong autonomy from the city. Yeah, so you couldn't, those same, you know, complaints and demands, you couldn't go there and say, you know, Fred Smith says that, you know, you guys are not doing this right. You better fix that. That's not something you could do.
And is, does, is there anywhere where it notes where we should do our complaints and concerns? Is it is it in a private meeting, or should they be done at the meeting? Does it say anywhere?
It doesn't say anywhere.
Don't say anywhere.
But the council is the person you report to since you've been appointed for that position by the council or mayor through the council.
I guess what I'm getting at is you got residents, her and my constituents, if they got complaints, they're going to come to us. But whatever reason, they don't feel as though they can go to the board, the board is not listening to them or whatever. So quite naturally.
That that board, the Avon Park Housing Board.
Housing Board. And so for whatever reason, they're not going to come, or whatever reason, they don't feel like they've been treated fairly or whatever, nobody's listening to them. So if they come to me and Shelley, there's nowhere to say that we sit in there as liaison, supposed to pretty much be quiet and listen and report back to this this mothership, right? And so if we're going to sit there and just listen, then where do we address our complaints and concerns? Like, not at the meeting? Should we go address them at a private meeting with the CEO?
If the council, you know, says, you know, after hearing something, you can take that back. We have absolutely no enforcement authority. Other than if it's an individual member creating a problem, that and that problem is meets the requirements to be removed, you know, for inefficiency or neglected duty or misconduct in office, then the mayor can say, okay, well, I want to remove that person. And they have their hearing after they get the notice and all that stuff, and they have an opportunity to argue their why they're wrong. And then the council can, they can remove who the mayor has already selected to remove.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, okay, can I can I address you with that? If the people can come here, the residents of the housing authority, and I'm quite sure anybody resident of Avon Park can come and address something about the housing, right? Okay. Okay. So, so, so listen to this, Ms. Sullivan. So if the residents of the housing authority can come to this board or address Dr. Kelly personally, what does Dr. Kelly do with that information? She bring it to us, the council?
She can bring it to you depending on whether or not it's an issue that can be resolved with the housing authority itself.
I'm I'm lost here because I'm trying to figure out what does the city have to do with the housing authority other than appoint?
The fair housing component is the only component that if someone has an issue with fair housing where, you know, I didn't get treated fairly because I'm poor or black or Chinese or whatever, then they can bring that up as a code violation, basically, and it could be addressed through the city manager. And then she can go ahead and relay that back to the housing authority staff or the CEO, and then, you know, it can go from there. A lot of times, these things can be remedied in-house.
Okay, makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Give your name and address and for the record there in the microphone.
Okay, that's a name, this is a word really short.
No problem.
I don't think y'all should vote on this, if anything.
Name and address for the record, please.
Right. Kira Demby, I live in Placid Lakes. And yes, I'm not from Avon Park, but all Highlands County. I have a problem with pretty much everything that I've heard you guys say about this. Not great at public speaking. I used to volunteer at an outreach where homeless people would come in, get lunches, they would apply for assistance. None of them would have talked to any of you guys, first of all. They're very intimidated. They feel judgy, like they feel like they're going to be judged. You guys sit here in their three hundred dollar chairs, at least suits, everything. They might be smelly, so they might not want to come in here and sit down or be near anybody. And I mean, they're amazing people, but also background check everybody. That shouldn't be a question. And what I have to speak about later, you'll understand why I'm so in like I background check my kids' teachers. And there's a reason. I had to report a judge for being biased. Don't if for situations like this, you don't want everybody to be from the town. You want people working there or working anywhere from outside because you don't want people to get too close. If you live in Avon Park, you're going to love Avon Park and it's going to mean something to you. But sometimes you get connected to these people, like they they touch you. So sometimes you end up breaking rules. But say me, I've been around this a lot. I don't choose favorites or anything, but it was hard hearing you guys talk about certain things. Why does it matter how much a background check is? If you want to be in that position, that shouldn't matter. I mean, yes, I could, what, sell my shirt and stuff and make money for forty five dollars for a background check or how much it costs, but you guys sit where you are. You guys have three hundred dollar comfortable chairs that you're sitting in. They can't sometimes even afford shoes, but I just, sorry, it was hard for me to listen to you guys talk about.
I have a question for you. Say you from.
I live in Placid Lakes, yes.
And what brings you to the city today?
I have to speak about something that I'm trying to make a change in to protect our children that are in private schools, but they accept our state scholarship that our taxes pay for. But there's holes in the system, so I'm trying to fix it, but it could have been avoided by background checks, by being patient, by having the right people in the place. So and you can't put a mayor in charge of everything. Just saying. But you should shouldn't have one person that gets to make the final calls. It should be a team making a final agreement, but you should have really someone. I'm not saying me in general, but someone like me that goes there, that can talk to these people, that can speak for these people, like an advocate. Because if I was them, I wouldn't want to come stand in front of you guys. I already shaking just standing in front of you guys talking, but that's me. Buy my stuff at a thrift store, not brand new. So can understand why they wouldn't want to come here.
Understood.
Ma'am, ma'am. It wasn't that we were complaining or I.
Can I respond? You'll have to get.
I I wasn't complaining about the background checks being done. If all we are doing is assigning the people who sit on those board and and the housing authority is completely a separate thing from the Avon Park, my point was just that maybe the housing authority should pay for the background checks. But I know that at one of the meetings, they were talking about maybe getting some kind of a mental health counselor. Ms. Taylor, do you remember the the correct verbiage on on what they were going to call that person? A case manager. They were looking to get a case manager to have concern, you know, if the residents had concerns, they could go to that case manager. The case manager could help them with different kind of outsourcing, how to, you know, watch their money, how to handle their money, how to make a budget, something like that, so.
How to one day come up out of there.
Yes, right, yes.
But I mean, also, instead of spending, like, I'm not judging your chairs or anything, but I'm using it as an example. Instead of spending three hundred dollars on one chair, couldn't you use that money to help things like that?
Well, I can tell you for sure that this is not a three hundred dollar chair.
I.
Because it is ridiculously uncomfortable. And I'm not trying to make light of your comment. I just want you to know it's not.
Well, I just kind of get not price. I bought a chair just like that, and it was pretty pricey for my daughter. I had to use the scholarship and it was three hundred dollars.
Well, if you if you feel passionate about this, reach out to the CEO and see if. Well, if you, if you feel passionate about this, reach out to the CEO and see if there's something that you can do to help.
Um, I just talked to the Marin Lake Placid, um, and he gave me some contact information for, um, some people higher ups. But when you're no one like me, it's really hard.
A what?
It, when, when you're a nobody.
You're not, you're not a nobody.
I'm just, I guess I'm, I say that just because people like me versus people that are higher, like where you guys are. Um, it's hard. Well, thank you, but I guess I'm not good with my words, but, um, let's say you guys are vote, you guys are where you are. Me, I have a hard time getting in contact with those people. I call, I call and call, don't get a call back, you email, no response. So it's really hard unless you come up here, and it took me a long time to be able to come up here, so.
You, you did a great job. And if you stick around after the meeting, I'll give you my phone number, and I can help you contact some of the people that, that you need to contact.
Thank you, actually, I was looking for you when it came in too, because someone actually told me to speak to you.
Okay.
So, but there are good things about you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else to add, Mr. Burr?
Yes, one additional slide. Maybe it's appropriate to do at this point, anyway. For, under supremacy of laws, uh, state statutes take precedence over city codes. City codes take precedence over the Avon Park Housing Authority bylaws and so on. Everything, um, flows down from the statute. What we're required to do is there, and, um, um, what we can do. So, just mentioning that, future reference, that's all I have.
I have one question, Mr. Jerry.
Yeah.
Of all the, um, statute that you did read in regard into the housing authority, did you see anything in there where, um, the housing authority who received federal money can close down a building and talk to people on the outside through a speaker? And let, let, let me say this, Mr. Jerry, um.
I, I, wait a minute, are you talking that, that they're not having government in the sunshine?
They're not having what?
Well, are you saying like, if we were to shut the whole, the, the building down, kick everybody out of the room, and then just have them listen to a speaker? Is that what you're, like, you're just saying, you're saying that they did?
How's an authority provide a certain service to their residents, you agree? And so, give you a scenario, during the COVID, it was shut down. I can get that, we was all afraid. But after the COVID, I, I wanted the complaints that I got from the communities outside, that when they go over there, they're talking to them through a speaker. They're not answering the phones, this is like a year, two years ago. They're not answering the phones, they talking to them through a speaker. I'm not exactly sure how they was making contact with appointments, I'm just, I'm not sure how. But they was talking through, through a speaker, it wasn't allowed in the building, and it was due to the COVID. Now, the COVID passed, the governor opened, opened the state back up, you know, COVID is over, open the doors. But they continued to do it. And so I was told that when I took it to the housing authority, it was explained to me that the reason why it was cold, due to, due to COVID, and they kept it closed because se- security of the staff.
Yeah, I, that's what I was gonna suggest, is that they probably doing it for security purposes.
Vote on, to close.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's close that you're just talking about the, the administrative office where somebody comes in to talk to somebody at the administrative office, not the meetings and so on, right?
Not the what?
Not their meetings, they, their board meetings.
Not the board meetings.
Just, just that, yeah, yeah, I, that, that's within their, their authority. I mean, that, that's independent of us. I'm not aware of any statute that, that the housing, Avon, uh, Park Housing Authority, their board members can make that decision. If they feel like it's necessary for security, then.
Over the building?
No, to, to, no, to, to talk to people that are coming to visit through a speaker and a, and a microphone, as opposed to having them sit there in their chair at, next to their desk. I mean, that's, it, you know, it's not something I would do, but, you know, we have no authority over what, what they do.
And I just wanted to interject again, Maria Sutherland, interim CEO. Those doors are going to be unlocked tomorrow. We decided last week that operationally, we will never lock those doors in the front. There are other locking mechanisms for the rest of the office setting, but the lobby has been cleaned out. Uh, we're buying little kiddie tables in there and stuff, and restructuring the inside, and also making it completely accessible to the public between eight and four thirty.
Yes, ma'am. And Ms. Southern, I was there when, when y'all made that decision. I, I, I was there, matter of fact, I brought it to the board. So, with that being said, Mr. Burr, I was just trying to figure out.
Yes.
I would have thought that there was some Florida statutes, some federal laws in place, that a board cannot shut down a federal building.
But I don't know if they're shutting down a building, that, that there are parts of the building that are, that are purely administrative, and people can't just go waltzing in there, you know, simply because they want to go walk, walk in. You know, that's, that's everywhere, that's even federal, federal buildings or, or, um, state buildings, city, city buildings, county buildings, everywhere. You can't just go in and say, I, I want to go in that office right there. No, they have areas where the public can come in, and if they're invited to go back in the back and, you know, go to certain offices, then they do. If they don't invite anybody to go back there because of security reasons, that's their right to do. As far as, far as, you know, I can tell.
I don't believe we have security issues. COVID was the, the instigator of lockup of the building, and it never reopened. So, from, I, as I mentioned, we had discussed this last week, and we've already invested in materials and inexpensive chairs uh, for our guests, and, um, those doors will be unlocked.
I, I, I was, I, I know it's unlocked, y'all voted on it to unlock. I was just trying to figure out, they've been locked for years, and I was just trying to figure out if that was legal, that's.
I can't think of any law that they're violating.
Okay. All right, well, I think all this was predicated that we have some vacancies on that board, is that correct? So, do we have the, we have the advertisement out for applications for that board, or? We do?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So we'll consider that at a future meeting, I'm assuming?
Do you post those on the bulletin board in City Hall? No, the, the.
The notices are posted on the city's website.
Okay, do they post them on the board, too?
I don't.
And for any vacancies?
Yeah, they're, they're out.
Yes, okay.
So, contrary to the way it's been done in the past, and I mentioned this the last time, we select, the list goes to the mayor. The mayor makes a selection. You all vote on whether you like the selection or not.
Very good.
And if you vote it down, he's gotta select somebody else.
Got it. All right, any other questions on the Avon Park Housing Authority? Seeing none? Moving on to item number twenty-one. Ms. McCure.
So, last week at the October sixth meeting, um, for the record, I wasn't, I wasn't done speaking. I still had some motions I wanted to talk about and a discussion that I wanted to, um, I wanted to have.
Okay.
But I got up to go get some water, and the meeting suddenly adjourned. I wasn't, I wasn't present for that, um, objection.
Okay.
So I found that very, um, rude. When, especially when we gave your sister almost four minutes to go to the bathroom and waited on her for a vote. So I'd appreciate it in the future if you would give me the same courtesy that you give her.
There was no offense by it, I had no idea that you were only going to the bathroom, so.
I wasn't going to the bathroom.
Whatever it is that you were doing, you were not at the table, that's all I'm saying.
Well, neither was she, but then you let her, we waited for her to vote. So I would just appreciate the same, please.
Wonderful.
Dr. Kelly, is there any way that you could give us an update on things that have been done this week regarding, uh, the Monday, October sixth meeting?
Yes, the letter requesting executive suspension of Mayor Garrett Anderson and Councilmember Brittany McGuire pursuant to Florida statutes one twelve dot fifty-one and Article Four, Section Seven C of the Florida Constitution was submitted. Uh, it was emailed Thursday, it was also mailed, um, priority with return receipt certified. It's my understanding it'll be at the governor's office tomorrow. On Friday, a letter request for investigation of Daniel Saul's real estate LLC business was sent to Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation. Again, sent priority with return receipt requested and emailed, and it should be at their office Wednesday.
Like, I'd like a copy of those letters, please.
Of course.
Was there anything sent to, uh, Ethics Board in Tallahassee?
Copies of the letter to Governor DeSantis were emailed to Florida Secretary of State, Florida Attorney General, Florida Commission on Ethics, Highland County State Attorney's Office, and the Avon Park City Clerk.
Thank you.
And then similarly, for Mr. Saul's letter, a copy was sent to the Florida Real Estate Commission.
Yeah, I don't recall that being part of the motion.
It, it was for the Florida Real Estate Commission, it was.
No, the, uh, sending it to the governor's office, I remember. Sending it to the other entities, I don't remember that.
Shelley had about, if I, if I'm correct, she had about three or four in one motion.
Yes, I do.
Four, the three or four was for Daniel Saul's. Um, the motion for the governor, it just said, was to forward the information and then found in the investigation to the governor's office. So to forward the investigation. I don't see anything about a letter, and I don't see anything about anybody else. Um, and then the one about Saul's was to the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation, the Real Estate Commission, and the Commission on Ethics. So those were the ones for Daniel Saul's, but none for the other, and it was just to.
It was just a copy, though, right?
And it was just to send the investigation report to those.
Yes, the investigation reports were attached to these letters and sent.
Okay, so at the October sixth meeting, um, there was remarks that were made that three agencies had looked at this whole brickle building debacle, which was the administration at the time, the county and the state, and you wanted to know how much more that I needed. You asked that? How much more did I need?
Please continue.
Okay, so all of these, um, all of these investigation, they were done before the city's investigation was done. Um, so I'm curious how the law firm found this stuff and the others didn't, because maybe they didn't have all the information, I don't know. So the administration was Mark Schrader at the time, and according to him on page thirty-seven of the report, he states the allegations against the mayor warranted the investigation. Uh, the county did their investigation and had to issue an amended investigation report because Eric needed to revise his statement and clarify due to a clerical error. They also didn't have the information we have now. Gilcrest also stated they definitely violated Florida Building Code and Florida statutes, so that's on page fifty-two, if anybody liked to look at it. And the ethics did their investigation, and they said there was probable cause regarding Form One and the procurement violations, but did not take any further action. They were very specific when they said that. They didn't have enough information to investigate the brickle building.
They did, actually, they, they did investigate that portion of it.
Okay, so, um, I have this that I'd like to, um, submit as public record. This is the order finding the probable cause. And in there, it says probable cause is to believe that the respondent, while serving as the mayor of Avon Park, violated Section one one two point three one three, three Florida statutes by doing business with his agency, and that there is probable cause to believe that the respondent violated Section one one two point three one three seven A. So I would like to submit that for public record.
I'd also note that has nothing to do with the brickle building itself.
Okay. So I do believe that this needs to be done once and for all. Um, if the Gilcrest was able to put this together with just public records requests, then I can only imagine what can be found with a, a real investigation with subpoenas. So my motions tonight are gonna be as follows.
We do have speakers.
Okay. Then I'll let the speakers go first. Anybody want to come up and talk?
We have a sign up? One sign up, Mr. Alex Dean. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Alex Dean, D E A N, thirty-eight thirty-five Arlington Street, Ford Myers, Florida. Um, first couple of things I'll say is, uh, Gainesville, um, switched to aluminum dumpsters, uh, about ten or twelve years ago. They last about fifty years lifetime. They cost about two to two and a half times as much. Um, a number of, uh, beach communities did that also, so I'll just throw that out there. TBI also makes, um, galvanized dumpsters that cost about twenty-five percent more than a steel dumpster. Um, so the galvanized ones have some limitations, and clearly they don't last as long as the aluminum dumpsters. Um, so, and by the way, I'll mention to the young lady who was, uh, a little timid to come up here. Don't be intimidated to come up here, remember, all these politicians, they work for you, so all of them do. Um, the letter that, uh, you guys sent last week to the governor's office, um, I had some thought in my head that I was wondering if that actually included a copy of the prior investigation that was done by the State Ethics Commission. Um, if it didn't, uh, I think you're gonna find that they're gonna determine that to be a lack of candor by, uh, and if you don't know what that means, that's not very good. Um, because that is the state, uh, Ethics Committee. Do you guys know who appointed the State Ethics Committee that your investigators found were not candid? Uh, and not credible? Well, the governor appointed five of them. The president of the Senate appointed two of them, the Speaker of the House pointed two of them. So they're gonna find out that you guys investigated them and called them a bunch of liars. So I think they should be investigated as well. Um, and that's who, uh, he's gonna be getting a letter about that. The other thing that I find very curious, and this should be in the record, is uh, who, under what authority did this city council investigate a county agency? Because on page sixteen of the allegations that were investigated, one of them clearly states, did the Highland County Building Department act properly in the issuance of the required permits and certificates? And in the state of Florida, there is very, very specific under this same Section one twelve that a city may not investigate any county agency. Do you know whose authority that falls under? The same governor that you're sending a letter to stating that you guys paid to investigate that county. I'm wondering if the county is aware of it, if anybody's done that. If not, don't worry about it, because I'm gonna make them aware of it next week. Because, uh, you know, as well as, um, the representatives, your state representatives, um, this has been started, you guys wanted the spotlight on this, it's getting there. There are attorneys from Gainesville, Jacksonville, even up to Massachusetts watching it. There is, uh, a, uh, there's reporters watching it from FGCU, Mike Braun from the news press, uh, news director for ABC in Tampa are now watching this. Um, and Byron Donalds' next, uh, meeting, uh, whether it's gonna be in front of reporters or a, uh, town hall, he's gonna be asked how he would respond as governor to a, uh, city council trying to usurp his authority in order so that they can bi- bypass the will of the voters and seize control of a city council simply to install a radical left woke agenda. And that's exactly how they're gonna interpret it. That's what they're gonna take it as, they're gonna get that letter. Now, I can't get a letter to the governor, but I can damn sure know the guy that can get a letter to his deputy chief of staff before the end of the week. And those are some of the things that'll be included in my letter, and I will be happy to send you guys a copy of it. Um, did, you know, one of the things that you guys keep asking up here right now about, uh, Councilwoman Taylor said, should statutes, uh, or isn't there a statute preventing the, uh, authority of somebody at the housing authority from shutting down a government building? Shouldn't there be a statute covering that? Well, there's statutes preventing what you guys did, and those were ignored. Um, not only that, just some of the minor things that happened last week. For example, when a question about the sunshine law came up, um, you, Councilwoman McCure, if I'm pronouncing that properly, you had an attorney right here, and you turned to an outside counsel that wasn't even under their purview to address that question and had that question addressed by them. I mean, these things are so bizarre that I've never seen them in any meetings that I've gone to, and I've been to hundreds, unfortunately. So, I don't think that it's gonna be, the, these letters you're sending are gonna be, uh, meet, met with the reception that you guys think that they are. Um, I'm kind of wondering if anybody notified, uh, any, uh, anybody on the council, uh, the county commission. commission. I have another question, and I don't know, this will be, I'll leave this one out there because I'm going to track this one down, and I think some reporters are already working on this. There was a hundred thousand dollars, basically. They said it was around eighty-four to ninety-four in free work that an attorney law firm did for you guys. Now, there's attorneys up here. Everybody back here's had to hire attorneys before, I'm certain. I'm going to call cap on that. I'm going to call BS for one. There's no attorney, you know that. You guys, everybody knows that. If you get a wrong number from an attorney, he's going to bill you for a tenth of an hour, right? Six minutes. So there's a, that law firm that you guys hired, Gilchrist, literally stood up and said, well, I billed you for eighty-four thousand dollars, but I did another free ninety-four thousand dollars that I didn't bill you for? Was that included in the letter? Because if you've got a lawyer that's going outside the scope of what he was assigned to do, and then he's doing six figures of work, who benefited from that work? And why was that not, why is that being hidden? Why is that not being included in the letters to the governor? Because that's very problematic. So somebody is somewhere going to have to account for a hundred thousand dollars. So i- whether he accounts for it, is he going to turn that in to the state bar as his pro bono work? So wait, he's doing pro bono work for a city council? Because I'm going to contact the bar about it and find out where those hours are accounted for. I mean, that's absurd to me. So there's, uh, others looking into that. Uh, another thing that, um, a couple of reporters are looking into, a question they even asked me was, um, how many times have council members brought this to the state's attorney's office so far? And questions are being posed to the, uh, Tenth Judicial Circuit as to how many times they've been approached and by whom? Because number one, that has to be disclosed. If somebody's trying to go and, and, uh, get a criminal investigation on their own, start it against any one of you guys, that has to be disclosed because you're public officials. Um, so, and a state attorney can't just launch that on their own, especially if, what you're asking then, is, you said, Councilwoman Taylor, you wanted it moved out of the tenth to another one. Uh, that kind of gives away that somebody's been to it in the tenth, but I'll point out something else. You're going to ask for a criminal investigation of council people that have been cleared by multiple investigations? You're going to ask a state's attorney to argue that the very people that he also worked for, the state, that nine of them on the state commission were all liars? That's the first hurdle they'd have to overcome. So I just, this is not gonna, you guys want the spotlight on this, it's on it. So, and it's growing. So.
What did you say your name was?
Alex Dean, D E A N.
Is this what you do? You go from city to city and, um, you know, find out what's going on in the city so you can what, report on it?
Yeah, sometimes that is what I do when I see wrongdoing happening. My main job is I'm a legal consultant.
Oh, you're legal, okay, makes sense now.
So, is it, is it something I'm not allowed to be doing?
I'm not sure you're allowed to do it, Mr. Dean. I just was wondering why you were so interested in the investigation here in Avon Park?
Well, because when I saw wrongdoing occurring, I thought somebody needed to step up. It looked to me, again, like you guys are trying to overthrow the will of the voters so that you guys can install a radical woke agenda in this small city. And I wonder if DeSantis is going to be too receptive of it, because that's the way he's going to see it. I wonder if your representatives are going to see that, you know, they're all Republicans, every one of them. Your, your state representatives, your, uh, state senators, your congressmen from this area, and the council people, whose authority you also usurped to do, to investigate them. You violated state law to investigate the county.
My next question, Mr. Dean, is, I think when you introduced yourself at the community center on, on October the sixth, I think you said you had some type of acquaintance with our mayor?
Yes, I do.
Are you really in here to, you know, speak on the mayor's behalf, or you just interested in this investigation?
Yeah, um, I think anybody could answer that that'd known me for two minutes. Nobody tells me what to say to nobody else, ever. By the way, if I'd known this was happening a year ago or two years ago, I would have been in here then. Okay? So nobody told me to go anywhere, nobody tells me to go anywhere. So.
Yes, sir.
But didn't you say you've been coming to Avon Park for the past twelve years?
I've been coming to Avon Park for about twelve to fifteen years.
And so, what, twice, twice a month or so, you said?
Uh, sometimes there might be six months that I don't come. Sometimes I might come twice a week.
Because we've been dealing with this for two years, so I don't know how you haven't heard of it.
Right, because I wasn't paying that much attention until I thought that I might move here. But regardless, it doesn't matter. If I want to go tomorrow into Monroe County and go to their commission meeting, and I see something that is improper and violating the law, I might decide to bring that to people's attention. You are the one who's said you wanted this, the spotlight brought on this. Now, as soon as somebody from the outside comes in, you guys don't like it.
It's okay for you to bring it to everybody's attention, but not for us.
Well, no, look at, look at this. I'm not questioning you bringing it to everybody's attention. I said, I think that you should. I absolutely think you should, because it's not going to be greeted the way you think it is.
And that's fine.
So, but, but look at this. The moment one person from the outside comes in, the moment one person comes in, the two people leading this radical left charge have an issue with it. I don't see anybody else saying, hey, whoa, you're an outsider, what are you doing here? I'm allowed to be here, that's why.
I'm allowed to be here. I just find it's...
I don't need your permission to confirm it either.
But I, I've been sitting right here for the last three and a half years. And I, I, I find it ironic sometimes how we get people from out of town, four, five miles, uh, four or five hours away to come in and want to talk about a particular thing that's going on right here in our city, and they bypass their city along the way. They couldn't care less what's going on in their city.
I talked about a couple things, not to interrupt you.
And address what's going on in our city.
Well.
So it makes my antennas go up. Like, why are you really here?
It's not your city, though.
It's, it's not.
It's the people's city. It's not your city, number one. Number two, when I saw other things that I thought might be helpful, such as the dumpster issue, which I have some experience with, because I know a guy who did do the dumpsters in Gainesville, I said, oh, nobody up here mentioned, uh, aluminum dumpsters and, uh, galvanized dumpsters. So no need to thank me.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir. If you have a question, state your name and address for the record, please.
Correll Nielsen, address is eight oh one South Latilla Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would just like to know how many people behind me is a resident of Avon Park? Just want to know.
Yeah. All right, yes, sir. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Danzer, six seventy-six Memorial Drive. I'm not in Avon Park, though.
Uh-oh.
I'm an outsider. Look out. This whole, as I hear some of you guys, debacle was a word. There are laws, then there's the spirit of a law, and then there's the perception of it all. In just a few days that I've even dug into this situation, even just a little, it stinks. A man buys a building, his employer is the mayor. The mayor, according to a video running around, has got four hundred grand tied up in the building. The benchmarks for the building improvements were removed. The man that owns the building, his wife is the manager of the building development. Permits seem to be all over the place. I mean, this is all public knowledge. There's nothing I, makes me wonder why you guys hired somebody when we could look this up in five minutes. The tenant of the building gets beat up by the owner of the building, and several council members decide not to cooperate with an investigation. I have questions. Where did the employee get the money to renovate the building? Why did a tenant get assaulted? And why does the city continue to do business with somebody that assaults a tenant? Who removed the benchmarks? And who refused to cooperate with an investigation and why? When we talk about perception, I'm just a normal guy. And when I just read normal things and you make your own decisions in life, this is horrible abuse, I see corruption all over it. And then I see some people that don't mind that the mafia might be running stuff. If we were transparent, and if we believed in transparency, I believe the mayor, first, I believe you'd be standing up here screaming that we shouldn't be doing business with that guy. But that puts you in a hell of a spot. A, he's your employee, B, he beats up people. Transparency would be every email, every document, every cell phone would be available to all of us. The reports, the investor would come forward and throw his books on the table and say, this is how we're doing it. Council members certainly wouldn't hide from any investigation if we were being transparent. We're not even close to transparent. We're not opaque. We've drugged this horrible situation in a deep, deep, muddy ass water. And I think everybody should start being, I don't want to say everybody, that's wrong. I think if any of these things are ringing in your ears that, hey, maybe he's got a point, I think we need to do better. We need to be righteous. We need to stand up for these people. This is who we're supposed to fight for. Not them coming at you guys saying, what's wrong? We're supposed to put their best interest in first. We're supposed to take care of the people that can't take care of themselves. We're supposed to be doing handouts, not handups. But here we are, two years? Two and a half years? We certainly aren't efficient, so we can add that to not transpan and not efficient. I thank you for your guys' time.
Anyone else at this time? Wish to speak?
Maria Sutherland, nine hundred West Main, and I'd like to appreciate the gentleman's comments, and also just point out that in terms of the county investigation, there's a contract, there's a contract between the city and the building department, so they are in essence a department of the city. So that has to be hashed out, but I also...
All right, we can't make comments from the audience.
That's a statute thing, so I'm not going to, I'm not a lawyer or a legal assistant, so I don't know that. But what I wanted to say was that this all started because there was a lack of transparency. And what really happened was, and I don't think people really recognize, is that the mayor did write a letter to the Ethics Commission when Mr. Saul's had submitted his proposal. While the proposal was in, in traction with the city, Mr. Anderson sent a letter to the Ethics Commission asking them if his previous business associate, or was he a previous business associate, was allowed, if he could vote on the issue of the brickle building, only because it was an RFP that went through. But he really honed in on the fact that he had a lease agreement with Mr. Saul's on another building where Promise Technologies, which is owned by, um, Councilwoman McGuire's husband, ten percent, and the mayor, ten percent, which we found out later they don't collect any money from. But the premise of that whole email was to say that he wanted to verify whether or not he could vote on anything to do with the brickle building. He even inquired on whether or not his sister could vote on anything. And when the Ethics Commission responded, they said, nothing about the sister, because they only dealt with your issue, Mr. Mayor. But what they responded was that for good governance, you ought not to. You should have said that to your sister. Yes, they did. Yes, for good governance. They said you could probably vote, but for good government transparency, you should, you could vote, you could not vote. You should abstain, that was the word.
Completely false.
The records show otherwise.
Okay.
So you abstained, but what you failed to do was to mention that you were involved with the brickle building. So that whole part of it was omitted from the Ethics Commission. And one of the responses that they had when their interviews was, your own father in the interview stated that Mr. McGuire works full-time for Promise Technologies. So that alone disqualifies Ms. McGuire from voting on anything having to do with the brickle building, because you were inured to the benefit of your husband's employment. So I just wanted to point that out, that those were records from the Ethics Commission that were never presented to this council. No one ever got a, a copy of that letter from the mayor. I mean, I had to get it through a public records request and the responses as well, and the results thereof. And when it came to the brickle building being investigated that first time, it was about actually Form One, which is the financial form that we all have to fill out when we're elected officials, which you had not done for several years, in, in putting down that you were part owner of the Promise Technologies. That was the real crux of that investigation.
No.
At the time, they didn't have all the information on the brickle building. They didn't have practically anything. That wasn't discovered until way after. Let's keep in mind, that Ethics Commission complaint happened in February of twenty twenty-four. They didn't respond for about seven or eight months. So, you know, nothing that was discussed during the latest investigation with the attorneys was ever even known to the Ethics Commission. In fact, they came and spoke to several people, and those people were told, we don't have anything on the brickle. They were complaining about Form One. So the entire premise of this Ethics Commission already investigating the brickle building is a ruse. It's a narrative that is untrue. They investigated Form One. You had to correct it. You went online and you corrected that you did own indeed ten percent of the company. So you corrected your Form Ones. That's what that entire investigation was about.
That's a wildly false statement, but if that's your truth, that's fine. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, please continue.
So the motion I have right now is, as per the recommendations of the Gilchrist Law Firm regarding the findings in the brickle building investigation report, I would like to have Dr. Kelly move forward to execute an RFQ to obtain a litigation attorney for any civil litigations outlined in this report.
Anything else?
No, that's my first motion.
Here, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, and so your motion was to bring, set on RFP for civil action, RFQ?
To obtain a litigation attorney for any civil litigations as outlined in their report.
Against whom?
We need to, what do you mean against who? Against the people who are listed in this report.
Which are?
Um, you and your sister.
Anyone else?
For now, for now, that's a little...
So you want to bring civil action against me and my sister?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you have a motion. You still wish a second?
I do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments?
I just have one question for you, Ms. McQuirr, Philly. So are you saying you don't trust, uh, the governor's office and ethics and that, and investigation people in Tallahassee to do that job for us?
I don't know how long it's going to take the governor. I don't know what's involved with the governor to come back at that.
Well, do you know how long it would take for us, or how much it would cost to buy?
I don't know. That's why we have to do an RFQ.
And to you, Mr. Um, Bernard, who knows? The governor may come back and reject it. There's no guarantee that he's gonna say yes to it.
Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Dolores Miranda, forty, fifty-one, East Old Bombing Range Road. I would like to submit a suggestion. If you are seeking civil litigation, maybe Daniel Saul should be included in your motion. Thank you.
I agree with that, Shelley.
I'll amend my motion to reflect his name also.
And I second it.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any additional comments, questions? Anything?
Just technically, I mean, it should be a motion to amend.
Okay, did you, did you make a motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend my, my previous, um, motion to include Daniel Saul's name in there as well.
Still wish a second?
I second it.
Okay, so there'll be a vote on the amended motion. Okay.
Be a vote on the amendment, then the amended motion.
Okay, got it. Yeah, obviously, uh, my name is named, so I'll be abstaining from this vote. Okay, please call the roll.
I abstained to the investigation. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I'll abstain as I'm named in the motion.
Now the motion, uh, on the motion as amended.
I'll abstain for the same reason. Yes. Yes.
No. No.
I'll abstain as I'm named in the motion. Okay? Okay, anything else?
Yes, so I know that there's some people in the audience that have problems with letters that being, that are being sent, but this one has to do with some more letters, so hang on. So the motion that I'd like to put forward is as per the recommendation of the Gilchrist Law Firm regarding the findings in the Brickell Building Investigation Report. I would like to have Dr. Kelly move forward with sending documents to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and copy the Commissioner Glass, James Olfmeyer with the Florida State Attorney's Office, Blaze Ignungliglia, excuse me for if I chop that up, Florida's Chief Financial Officer, and inform them of our intent to seek criminal charges. Then to the U.S. Attorney's Office to seek federal charges against Gare Anderson and Brittany McGuire as outlined in this report.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll. Did you have a question?
Um, as I'm.
Name and address in the record, please.
Kira Denby, Placid Lakes. As I'm watching you guys, first thing that pops in my head is, gonna try to lighten up the mood, is it the chairs that are uncomfortable or the company surrounding you that's making you uncomfortable? But not just that, as a mayor, I really think it's really unprofessional for you to be rolling your eyes, sitting up here while she's speaking.
Okay.
Regardless of how you feel about the situation, you should respect what she has to say. That's all I have to say.
And for the record, it is both. Thank you, it's both.
Okay. Please call the roll.
I'll abstain since I'm named in the motion.
Yes. Yes.
No.
I'll abstain as I'm named in the motion. Anything else?
This is the last one, and then we'll be done with this, and like everybody wants to do, we'll just move on and go from there.
I think it's far from over.
Exactly right. So this is my last motion, as per the recommendation of the Gilchrist Law Firm regarding the findings in the Brickell Building Investigation. I would like to have Dr. Kelly move forward with sending individual complaints on behalf of the city to the Ethics Commission regarding the allegations against Brittany McGuire, Gare Anderson, Leah Salz, and Eric Longshore of the Highlands County Building Department. That's my motion.
I can second it for discussion right there.
Sure.
So I second it. And, and so my question is, Ms. McCure. When we submitted the inquiry about the, the CO, their procedure, how, how it, how it works. If I, if I remember right, there were other people involved in it who, for lack of better words, covered down on the inquiry as well, so why just those particular names?
I don't exactly know which ones at the county participated besides the attorney and besides the, the director. I think her name is Herner.
Okay.
I don't one hundred percent feel comfortable with any that weren't mentioned.
So what was, tell me the names again you named?
Leah Salz and Eric Longshore. Garrett and Brittany.
Did the attorney not come back and say, you know, there was nothing in the finding, didn't she come back and say that as well?
No, actually, I think she said that on page, I'll look at my notes. That on page fifty-two.
What was the conclusion? She was the, who, who made the conclusion?
There were the irregularities in the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, there was the Florida Building Code that was yeah, that was, that violated the Florida Building Code, and then there was another one for concealing the work before inspection. Okay.
I've already seconded.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
I'll abstain since I'm named in the motion.
Yes. Yes.
No.
I'll abstain as I'm named in the motion. Let's have one question for you, Shelley, after all of this, will you be satisfied that this has been looked into? All that the city council needs it to be looked into?
Can I ask you a question, Mayor? You say after all of this, what do you call this? You mean after all of these investigations?
All the motions that have been made and all of the hundreds of thousands of dollars that will be spent of taxpayer money, will you be finally be satisfied that this issue can be done?
For you to sit there and say, we've spent taxpayer money on this.
That's exactly what's about to happen.
Well, Mayor, we spent a lot of taxpayer money on the Brickell Building too, but that don't seem to matter to you. Okay? So.
The city got what it paid for. City got what it asked for. The city has one of the most prosperous downtown situations that has happened in anybody's memory. It only has five.
All within a scam, all of it was done in the scope of a scam.
That may be your opinion, it's not a true one.
We'll find out, we'll find out.
So will you be satisfied for all?
I will, after all of this is done, I'm gonna, I'm, you can't tell me when.
Miss Taylor, I didn't ask you.
When all's said and done, wherever the chips may fall, I'm gonna be satisfied, but I won't be satisfied until all of this is done.
Again, Miss Taylor, I did not ask you.
Well, the only reason you're asking me is because I made the motions, but yes, I will, yes.
Okay.
If we get all the way down to it and nothing comes out of it, then at least everybody will know and there's transparency and that's what we're after.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right. City Manager Report.
Yes, thank you. So I've had requests when you would like to have Halloween. I understand typically you have it the Saturday before, so that would be October twenty-fifth. Is that acceptable to council?
That's fine with us, normally there's an organization that wants to host an event that day, have they, has anybody reached out to you?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Heard from an, an organization per se. I know Avon Park Main Street is having their Spooktacular on Friday, the thirty-first.
Okay.
But for the kids to actually trick or treat. Do you want to have the Saturday prior?
Yeah, I mean, normally how it's worked is that there's always been an organization that wanted to have something, and so they were typically kind of hosting that, and that's why it fell on a certain day.
Okay.
Usually it wasn't just the council arbitrarily picking a day, but if there's no organization that wants to have something, you know, for Halloween, that's, that's fine, it shouldn't really matter.
Okay. Great, thank you, and then I mentioned previously that the ICMA Conference is October twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. The next council meeting is the twenty-seventh, I would prefer to not be here for that, if that's possible, would you be amenable to canceling it? Saying that you would still have the CRA Board Meeting that night.
Okay, do, do we need to have the CRA Board Meeting that night?
Well, it's my understanding that the lawyer is going to be ready with the grant application and the resolution for adoption.
Okay.
But if it's not ready, then no, we wouldn't agendize the meeting.
Do you need a motion of that effect?
Well, in addition to that, it's my understanding you typically cancel the week of Thanksgiving, which is eleven twenty-four, and then the week of Christmas, which is twelve twenty-two, so I would need a motion to cancel all three of those.
So moved?
Second.
We have a second, any questions, comments? Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Nancy Fisk, six oh three South Hart Avenue, Avon Park, but I'm actually speaking on behalf of Main Street. We have submitted a request for an activity which was submitted and was not able to be put on this agenda. The request is for the second Friday in November. And if we have to wait until that next November meeting for approval, it really won't give us time to promote it. This is an event that was asked for in the public meetings that we held when people, you know, when we tried to find out what people wanted from Main Street. And so I'm asking if there's any other way that this can be approved. You know, if the meeting isn't held.
And it is a council, it's a council decision, not a CRA decision, right?
Excuse me?
Correct.
It's for an event, okay.
That's correct, so we have tentatively reviewed it. I did reach out to their executive director and let her know that I see no reason why the council would not approve it, if they wanted to go ahead and promote it, we would get it in front of you on eleven fourteen.
Okay. You see a problem with that?
Uh, no, if that's, I mean, because that's what we wanted to make sure everyone is approved.
Your, your event's eleven fourteen, the council meeting's eleven ten, I'm sorry.
Perfect.
Well, so that's, that's what she's saying, I believe, is that you're, you're saying it's not going to be enough notice. Well, we will start promoting it and we'll start working on it, but we don't want to all of a sudden have a problem. I think we've submitted everything that's needed and I'll, you know, as long as you're happy with it, that's fine with us, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we're still reviewing, so I know fire and code enforcement, Public Works has to take a look at it, but the preliminary site plan that was sent over today, it doesn't look like it's going to be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fisk, what type of event is it?
It's called Hometown Hangout, and it is a street closure on North Museum Avenue with vendors, food trucks, and music, just an opportunity for people to get together like a street dance.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, so we have a motion and a second. For the three meeting cancellations there, is there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
So should something come up and it's pretty important, that could be a special meeting called, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anything else for, well, actually, we do have a sign-up, Ms. Kira. Young lady's been up a few times there. Just give your name and address for the record again.
Yeah. Kira Denby, Placid Lakes.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the address that you can mail the governor and the president.
Comments to the council, please.
Yes, uh, to you, yes. Thank you for letting me speak, I'm here to bring attention to something that is not only important to me as a parent, but as a member to our community. My goal here is to inform other parents why it is important to always background check everyone that will be alone with your child, especially at private schools. Last year, my daughter, it was her first year in private school, and we were able to use a school scholarship to pay for the tuition. My daughter loved the school until this teacher felt ill and another person was hired to teach the class. Suddenly, my daughter was afraid to go to school and it created stress in her family, she's also autistic. Suddenly, my daughter, it, her grades started going down. Also, little signs, so then I started to do my own research and found out that the new teacher had been removed from a previous teaching position by the Florida's Board of Education for mistreating students. So how was this teacher able to be hired at the school where she repeated the same abuse? This is how, there's holes in the system for private schools. If you put your child in a private school that is a non, that is not a nonprofit and does not accept the scholarship, they make their own rules, there's no protection. So, so pretty much at the end of the day, schools that are a nonprofit that do accept the scholarship, they must have certified teachers or they must pass a level-two background and fingerprint check. But there's no one in charge to make sure that these things happen, so plenty fall through the cracks. And another example, there was a teacher that passed the background check and was hired in a school in Orlando. They found out afterwards that he was wanted in another state for doing things to children. So thankfully, they did arrest him. I trusted the founder of the school to keep my child safe. She was the last person I would have guessed that would have put our children in danger, and I was wrong. Regardless of where you send your children to school, always pay attention to sudden changes in their behavior and find out why. Because there's always a reason, I was able to take the information I found and make sure it got into the right hands. As a result, the teacher was fired and the founder of the school was forced to sell the school. Thank you to all of the teachers that believed in me when I gave them the information in Lake Placid. That school's still going on, but it is a different school now, they're following the, the rules. Is, if your teachers know you have the right to say something, see something, say something, the problem was, they were afraid because that founder put the fear in them, if you say something, you're gonna get fired. But that's called retaliation, you can't do that. But also know your rights. If you don't know them, learn them, come to me, my Facebook is OhKira, I will help you, help any parent for free. It took me getting an advocate for my child to learn what was right, what was wrong, how to speak. Because if it was years ago, I wouldn't even have been able to come up here and speak. There's books that you can read that help. But everything that I've done this past year, I've done it without spending a dime because I knew my rights. And now I'm trying to help other parents because it's not just Lake Placid, there's schools all over and I hope your sister, I know she works at a school, I just hope that she's protecting the children as well. Especially private schools that accept the scholarship. So that's what I'm working on now, is to fix the holes in the system, which I did mail it to the governor, I mailed it to the president, and thankfully, Lake Placid Police Department are going to be helping me press charges now, but it took way too long. So that's why I want to fix the hole, so hopefully it never happens to any other child ever again. It's O-H space K-E-R-A, and it's not a picture of me, it's a picture of a hand, and it has like freedom and stuff, so feel free to message me, my inbox is always open, and I'll always respond for free.
Very good. All right, anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.